Good evening, excuse me. Good evening and welcome to the December first, Board of County, Stanley County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. This meeting is a little unusual and different from all the other meetings because this is the Board's first meeting in December. And every year at their first meeting in December, not only do they do their reorganization, but every two years, there's also new folks who typically join the Board and are sworn in. So that will be the first order of business this evening will be to swear in an existing member of the Board and some new members of the Board. And from there, they will begin their reorganization meeting where they will select a chairman, a vice chairman, set their committee appointments, set a meeting schedule, and do some other business before they get into the regular agenda. And so without further ado, I would ask for the Honorable Representative Justin Burr to come forward, who's gonna do eight swearing-in ceremonies this evening. So, Justin, the floor is yours.
Thanks, sir. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Burleson. Okay, do it, do it right here. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joseph Burleson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joseph Burleson.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear. Do further solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do further solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
The State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
The government thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Endeavor to support.
Endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
Of said state.
Of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joseph Burleson.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
That I will well.
Well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
The Office of County Commissioner.
According to the best of my skills.
To the best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
That I will not allow my actions.
That I will not allow my actions.
As County Commissioner.
As County Commissioner.
To be influenced by.
To be influenced by.
Personal or political friendships.
Personal or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joseph Burleson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will administer justice.
That I will administer justice.
Without favoritism to anyone.
Without favoritism to anyone.
That I will do equal law.
That I will do equal law.
And right to all persons.
And right to all persons.
That I will not knowingly or willingly.
That I will not knowingly or willingly.
Take by myself or for any other person.
That I will not take by myself or for any other person.
Any fee.
Any fee.
Gift.
Gift.
Rituety or reward.
Rituety or reward.
Whatsoever.
Whatsoever.
For any matter.
For any matter.
Or thing by me.
Or thing by me.
Done or to be done by virtue of my office.
To be done.
To be done.
To be done.
By virtue of my office.
By virtue of my office.
To accept the salary.
Accept the salary.
And allowances.
And allowances.
By law provided.
By law provided.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And truly.
And truly.
Execute faithfully.
Execute faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
The duties of the Office of County Commissioner.
To the best of my skills.
To the best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Need to get a legislator to rewrite these. Joseph, you wanna sign? Look at it, I hear you. Commissioner Eifert. Can I say? Deep breath. Be ready. I've never been accused of talking fast. You ready? Take your oath. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Scotty Eifert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Scotty Eifert.
Do further solemnly.
Do further solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And the constitutional powers.
And authority.
And authority.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be.
Or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution.
With the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Scotty Eifert.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly.
And truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the Office of County Commissioner.
Of the Office of County Commissioner.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
That I will not allow.
And that I will not allow.
My actions as County Commissioner.
My actions as County Commissioner.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By personal.
By personal.
Or political friendships.
Or political friendship.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Scotty Eifert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will administer justice.
That I will administer justice.
Without favoritism.
Without favoritism.
To anyone.
To anyone.
That I will do equal law.
That I will do equal law.
And right.
And right.
To all persons.
To all persons.
That I will not knowingly.
That I will not knowingly.
Or willingly.
Or willingly.
Take by myself.
Take by myself.
Or any other person.
Or any other person.
Any fee.
Any fee.
Gift.
Gift.
Rituety or reward.
Rituety or reward.
Whatsoever.
Whatsoever.
For any matter.
For any matter.
Or thing by me.
Or thing by me.
Done or to be done.
Done or to be done.
By virtue of my office.
By virtue of my office.
Accept the salary.
Accept the salary.
And allowances by law.
And allowances by law.
Provided.
Provided.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And truly.
And truly.
Execute faithfully and impartially.
Execute faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office.
Of the Office.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
To the best of my skills.
To the best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner O'Hanlon. That better hat's coming up, gotta get her up here. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I Bill O'Hanlon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
I Bill O'Hanlon.
Do further solemnly.
Do further solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
I Bill O'Hanlon.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of County Commissioner.
Of County Commissioner.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
That I will not allow.
That I will not allow.
My actions.
My actions.
As County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By personal.
By personal.
Or political friendship.
Or political friendship.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
I Bill O'Hanlon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will administer justice.
That I will administer justice.
Without favoritism to anyone.
Without favoritism to anyone.
That I will do equal law.
That I will do equal law.
And right to all persons.
And right to all persons.
That I will not knowingly.
That I will not knowingly.
Or willingly.
Or willingly.
Take by myself.
Take by myself.
Or any other person.
Or any other person.
Any fee.
Any fee.
Gift.
Gift.
Rituety or reward.
Rituety or reward.
Whatsoever.
Whatsoever.
For any matter.
For any matter.
Or thing by me.
Or thing by me.
Done or to be done.
Done or to be done.
By virtue of my office.
By virtue of my office.
Accept the salary.
Accept the salary.
And allowances.
And allowances.
By law provided.
By law provided.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office.
Of the Office.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
Stanley County Commissioner.
To the best of my skills.
To the best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Commissioner Louder.
This is my granddaughter, Lily Peter.
Ready to take your oath?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. If you will, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Janet Louder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Janet Louder.
Do further solemnly.
Do further solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Endeavor to support.
Endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Janet Louder.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly.
And truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of Office of County Commissioner.
Of Office of County Commissioner.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skill and ability.
Of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
That I will not.
That I will not.
Allow my actions.
Allow my actions.
As County Commissioner.
As County Commissioner.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By personal.
By personal.
Or political friendships.
Or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Janet Louder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will administer justice.
That I will administer justice.
Without favoritism.
Without favoritism.
To anyone.
To anyone.
That I will do. That I will do equal law.
That I will do equal law.
And right to all persons.
And right to all persons.
That I will not knowingly.
That I will not knowingly.
Or willingly.
Or willingly.
By myself.
By myself.
Or any other person.
Or any other person.
Any fee.
Any fee.
Gift.
Gift.
Rituety or reward.
Rituety or reward.
Whatsoever.
Whatsoever.
For any matter.
For any matter.
Or thing.
Or thing.
By me.
By me.
Or to be done by virtue.
Or to be done by virtue.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Accept the salary.
Accept the salary.
And allowances.
And allowances.
By law provided.
By law provided.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of Office.
Of Office.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And ability.
And abilities.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner McIntyre.
Don't worry, I'm not gonna kiss you after this is over.
I was thinking the same thing. I was saying I'll kiss you.
Well, it's legal now.
And you read this to millions. Commissioner McIntyre, you ready to take your oath?
I am.
All right, if you will, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I Gene McIntyre.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
I Gene McIntyre.
Do further solemnly.
Do further solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Endeavor to support.
Endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
I Gene McIntyre.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the Office.
Of the Office.
Of county commissioner.
Of county commissioner.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
That I will not allow.
That I will not allow.
My actions.
My actions.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By personal.
By personal.
Or political friendships.
Or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Gene McIntyre.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will administer justice.
That I will administer justice.
Without favoritism.
Without favoritism.
To anyone.
To anyone.
That I will do equal law.
That I will do equal law.
And right.
And right.
To all persons.
To all persons.
That I will not knowingly.
That I will not knowingly.
Or willingly take.
Or willingly take.
By myself.
By myself.
Or any other person.
Or any other person.
Any fee.
Any fee.
Gift.
Gift.
Gratuity or reward whatsoever.
Gratuity or reward whatsoever.
For any matter.
For any matter.
Or thing.
Or thing.
By me.
By me.
Done.
Done.
Or to be done.
Or to be done.
By virtue of my office.
By virtue of my office.
Except a salary.
Except a salary.
And allowances by law.
And allowances by law.
Provided.
Provided.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And truly.
And truly.
Execute faithfully.
Execute faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of Stanley County Commissioner.
Of the office of Stanley County Commissioner.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, but.
The opera calls for a second. May I take your oath? Repeat after me. I state your name.
Terry Blalock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Stanley Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor. Got a long title there.
I'll let you, the office of Stanley County Soil and Water Supervisor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Terry Blalock.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will, the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
And the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be.
Which are or may be.
Established for the government.
Established for the government.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Terry Blalock.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Stanley Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
Of Stanley Soil and Water District Supervisor.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Burr? You place your, uh, left hand on the Bible, raise your right, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Terry Spur.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Stanley Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
Stanley Soil and Water District Supervisor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Terry Spur.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And I will endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
Support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Terry Spur.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
Truly execute.
Truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Stanley Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
Soil, Stanley Soil and Water.
Conservation District Supervisor.
Supervisor.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Ms. Smith? All right, if you will, uh, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Judy Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Stanley Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
As Stanley Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Judy Smith.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be.
Which are or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support, maintain.
To support and maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Judy Smith.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Stanley Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
Of Stanley Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skill.
Of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Representative Burr. And congratulations to all the new members and, uh, old members who are back with us again, and same to the, uh, Soil and Water Board. Congratulations to you, to you as well. The next order of business is to select a chairman for the next, uh, year for the Board of County Commissioners. So at this time, I will take nominations for the position of chairman.
Mr. Manager, I nominate Jan Lauder.
I say.
Okay, we have a nomination for Jan Lauder. There's not a, there's no need for a second on nominations, but we have a nomination for Jan Lauder. Are there any other nominations?
Yeah, I was giving this a lot of thought on who I think could lead us, and I don't know if he is willing to or not, but he's done great as a mayor down there and, and, um, locust, and he has communicated well on the radio, so I don't know if Scott Eferd has, if he has any interest, I'd like to nominate him for this position this year.
Mr. Manager, I do not.
Okay, with that, we, although you made the, made the nomination, he doesn't accept, so we won't take a vote on that matter. Any other nominations for the position of chairman? A second for that motion?
A second. Make a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the, the floor for nominations. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Noes likewise?
No.
With that, uh, the floor is closed, and now we'll ask for a vote for chairman for Jan Lauder. Will need, uh, the, the, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes likewise?
Okay. Congratulations, Madam Chairman. It's your meeting.
Thank you. I first want to welcome all of you to tonight's meeting. The next order of business is to elect the vice chair. I'll open the floor pursuant to General Statute one five three A dash thirty-nine for nominations for vice chairman. Note that the chairman is the presiding officer of the Board of Commissioners, and unless excused by rule of the board, the presiding officer has the duty to vote on any question before the board, but does not have the right to break a tie in which he or she has participated. Uh, I'll call for the board. Are there any nominations for the office of vice chair?
Madam Chairman, I would like to nominate Commissioner Tony Dennis.
We have a nomination for Commissioner Tony Dennis. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all this, those in favor, Tony Dennis, vice chair of the Board of Commissioners signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Dennis. The next order of business is to ask approval for the following public official bonds, and I'll read from the list. For the tax administrator, Clinton Swearengen, a bond in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, which expires on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. For the finance officer, Toby Henson, the amount of the bond at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the expiration of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. For register of deeds, Suzanne Lauder, the order is for a fifty thousand dollar bond, which expires December first, two thousand and fifteen. And for the sheriff, George Burris, a bond for five thousand dollars, which expires December first, two thousand and fifteen. I'll ask for a motion to approve the, those public bonds.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the bonds that you just read out.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the official bonds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The chair will open the floor for nominations to the following boards and committees.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion, uh, that we appoint, uh, Commissioner Lawhan to the chairman of the EDC, uh, Commissioner E- Eferd as the alternate, uh, and yourself, Madam Chair, to the, uh, Board of Health, uh, Commissioner McIntyre to the Social Services Board, Commissioner Shuto to the Library Board, Commissioner Eferd to the Airport Authority, Commissioner Dennis to the alternate of the Airport Authority, Commissioner Eferd to the Fire District Commission, Commissioner Lawhan to the Alamoir Downtown Development Commission, Commissioner Shuto to the Senior Services Board, myself, Commissioner Burleson to the Rural Planning Organization, Commissioner Lawhan as the alternate, Commissioner Burleson, myself, to the Stanley Water and Sewer Authority, Commissioner McIntyre as the alternate, and Commissioner McIntyre to the Central Line Council of Government, and Commissioner Lawhan as the alternate.
Second the motion.
We have a second to the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The Board of Commissioners establishes meeting dates for the year two thousand and fifteen. In order to do this, I will tell you that our first and third Mondays of each month, except for June, July, August, and September, are the times at which we meet at seven P M. on each of those evenings. The meeting schedule is as follows. Monday, January the fifth, and Tuesday, January the twentieth, it being on the twentieth due to the nineteenth as being Martin Luther King's holiday. Monday, February second, and Monday, February sixteenth, Monday, March second, and Monday, March sixteenth, Monday, April sixth, and Monday, April twentieth, Monday, May fourth, and Monday, May eighteenth, Monday, June first, Monday, July sixth, Monday, July third, Tuesday, September the eighth, which was rescheduled due to September the seventh being Labor Day holiday. Monday, October fifth, and Monday, October nineteenth, Monday, November second, and Monday, November, November sixteenth, Monday, December seventh, and Monday, December twenty-first.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Uh, I would just propose that, I mean, I know we have four months that we only meet once a month, because usually, and there's not that much to, to consider, and June, we meet several times because of the budget. Uh, I would like to add a month to that, uh, if we could, uh, say meet May the eleventh, and not meet but one time in May also, if the board so chooses. That would give us another month there that, of course, I've always advocated that we only meet once a month anyway, but, uh, I think that since we're gonna be meeting, uh, quite a few in June, uh, that maybe we'd want to, uh, to do that way. Open for discussion. I'll make that in the form of a motion and.
Okay.
You know, the rest of the schedule's okay.
Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Dennis seconds the motion. Manager?
Madam Chair, I would only say that we, that second, that third meeting, or the second meeting, the, the third week, that's typically when we present the budget, so if we, if you all move that meeting up, we're just, that's gonna shorten our, our staff's, uh, budget time. That's not an issue, but I just want you to be aware of that. I mean, I'll just have to back it up. The departments will have to start earlier. We'll have to, um, start in, in, uh, earlier in March than we typically have, because it'll be another, a week earlier. So it's not an issue, I just wanted you all to be aware of that.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Oh, then not meet the eleventh, then just have the one meeting on May eighteenth, would, uh, would that'll be okay? Just still have one meeting, but do it the eighteenth, if that's okay with the board.
So you're amending your motion for.
I am, yes.
May the eleventh and May the eighteenth?
No, no.
No, May the eleventh?
No. Just May eighteenth.
Just May eighteenth, thank you.
I'm, I didn't mean to complicate things. I know, I always do.
Okay, um, we have a motion and a second. All those in, Commissioner Dennis second the motion. All those in favor.
Madam Chair, a question. If, if a special call meeting is needed, will that be possible?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
And Commissioner Dennis answered his question, but I don't think everybody heard it. A call meeting with forty-eight hours notice, yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion carries. The schedule's adopted. At this time, I'd like to introduce to all of you Sheriff George Burris, and he has asked that he be allowed to speak to us very briefly tonight. Sheriff Burris?
I'd just like to take a minute to bring to the commissioners and, uh, the future of our Stanley County Sheriff's Office, which I'm very proud of. Just wanna take a minute of your time and introduce our new administration. If you would stand, our chief deputy, Carla King, one of only four female chief deputies in the state, and I'm very proud to have her on board, our captain over at Detective Division, Brian Hatley, our captain over at the SEAL Division, Roddy Tomlin, and our captain over at the Detention Center, Jeff Bradford. I'd like to give them a hand and thank them for their service. And I just wanna take a, take a minute and thank you guys for putting your trust in me as the sheriff, and I look forward to working with you for many years to come, and look forward to sharing ideas and getting good advice and good leadership. And as far as the community goes, guys, I wanna thank y'all for being part of Stanley County and all that you mean to us, and I pledge to do your fine job as sheriff and work to the very best of my ability to give your sheriff's office you can be proud of. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Sheriff Burris, and thanks to all of you for coming and introducing, being introduced to us tonight. To continue our meeting, I'll call on Commissioner Gene McIntyre to lead us in invocation. I'm sorry. Oh, excuse me, I goofed. Um. The chair announces that during any regular meeting of the board, the county commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as board of governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District or the Ponty Point Water District, may, at their discretion, recess a commissioner's regular meeting and reconvene as the board of governors of either of the two above, or two named entities, in order to conduct business matters related to that entity. That being announced, now I'll call on Commissioner McIntyre to lead the invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we are so thankful for this day. We're thankful for the opportunities that we've been afforded. We just ask your blessings upon this board, this new board, that we might go forward and make those decisions that would be pleasing to you, and would be in the best interest of the citizens of Stanley County. Dear Father, we ask these things in Christ's name for His sake. Amen. Would you please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance?
I know some of you in attendance have been here to be witness to the ceremonies of the commissioners and others, um, being given their oath of office, so at this time, I'll call for a five-minute recess. Any of those who wish to, to leave, feel free to do so, and any of those who wish to remain, we appreciate you doing so. Thank you. Order, the next order of business is to approve the agenda.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I think we have, uh, before us an add-on to the agenda for the, uh, Highway two hundred water transmission main project resolution that we were handed the.
That is correct, so we will make that number four and move those following five, six, and seven, if it so pleases the board.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Eferd second the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the motion carries. The next order of business is our consent agenda. Oh, excuse me. Oh, the next is E nine eleven, naming of a new road as Little Farm Road. The presenter, Karen McDaniel, nine-one-one director, Brandy Webster, nine-one-one communications.
Good evening. We were notified on October the sixth that we had an easement that needed to be named for emergency purposes due to residences being on that road, um, and this is an easement that is located off of Aldridge Road, and it's approximately two thousand four hundred and ten feet from Old Davis Road. In your packet of information, we had included for you copies of the emails that we received from our planning director asking us to go ahead and name the easement. Also, there are maps in there showing you the location of the road. Our database coordinator, which is Ms. Brandy Webster, had sent out appropriate notices to property owners at that location, asking them to come up with five names that would be acceptable within our department, so that we didn't have a conflict with other road names within Stanley County. We did receive back two forms from property owners, and our database coordinator went through the names that were submitted, and the one name that she found would fit in with the road names that we already have is Little Hill Farm Road. And so we are requesting that you hold a public hearing tonight. Notification was sent out about the public hearing, and once you've held the public hearing, if everything is okay, that you consider and approve the proposed name of Little Hill Farm Road. I do have Ms. Brandy Webster with me, if you have any questions, because she does handle the addressing and send out the notices. She would be better able to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Does the board have any questions? Hearing none. I now declare we're in public hearing. Anyone to speak for the naming of a road located off Aldridge Road and approximately twenty-four hundred and ten feet from the Old Davis Road intersection to be named as Little Hill Farm Road. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, was the pleasure of the board.
I make a motion.
I make a motion, we don't name the road. We, we change the name of the road.
Um, thank you Commissioner Oshito. I think we need to go out of the public hearing.
Yeah, declare the public hearing closed.
Uh, declare the, I declare the public hearing closed. We have a motion from Commissioner Oshito and a second, from Commissioner Dennis. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the motion passes.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I have a question. Where's our security tonight?
Perhaps the manager can answer that?
Um, Tyler, the clerk, had contacted the new Sheriff, um, I believe last Tuesday or Wednesday, I can't remember, but as we were preparing, as we always do, for the, for the week ahead, and we, that's consistent with calling the Sheriff or calling the people that Sheriff has designated. Then when we contacted the Sheriff, he told us that he was going to be here this evening, and so he would provide the security, and so, we didn't question that, we just, we went, went along with it. So, if you, we will certainly share your concerns with the Sheriff, uh, on tomorrow morning, and make sure that he, uh, either himself stays for the meeting, or has someone else here.
It's a point, I, I did talk to him, and I'm surprised he's gone, because I did mention that to him during the intermission, that I was concerned about not having security over there watching the door throughout the meeting. And I know we had four of them here, but they were sitting up front just watching us.
We defer to the Sheriff in terms of his decision on security.
Moving to the next item on the agenda is Social Services' request to establish two new positions on the Child Welfare Department, and Ms. Tammy Schrinker is our Director. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I come before you tonight to request that we be allowed to establish two new positions in our Child Welfare Section, and also upgrade one of our existing positions. The good news is that we have received money from the Legislature in order to do this, and so there will be no additional county funds this year or for the next fiscal year. So, are there any questions?
It's my understanding, these are, Tammy, these are reoccurring funds, right? So, which means year after year, they should be in the budget?
We have, we have been told that they will be reoccurring for next year, definitely, and we, we think that they will be reoccurring for the following years, but we have, we have provided some documentation from the State saying that they are continuing. Um, so I, I would say we can absolutely be assured that they will be here next fiscal year. After that, we hope.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further questions?
Madam Chair, I do have a question, uh, for knowledge purposes.
Yes, sir.
I read your information, and it talked about the ratio that the State would like to get to was one worker per 10 children. I think that's what I read, and I'm curious to see how many of these workers we, or officers we already have, and what is the current ratio?
Okay, um, it's, in, in the CPS realm, which is the Child Protective Services, excuse me, it's 10 families per worker. In our Foster Care Division, it is 15 children per worker. Um, right now, with our Child Protective Services cases, we have some workers, our worker, um, that has the most cases, has 26 at the present time. We have had quite a bit of turnover in that unit, and now we are fully staffed and have been fully staffed, um, for about four months now. Um, so we have been working very diligently to get those numbers down. Um, so we, we feel like with these additional two positions, and once we get those workers on board, and we're able to get them trained, that we will be able to hopefully meet that ratio. We are not meeting it at the present time.
Do any members of the Board have other questions? What's the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this, uh, request.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre, second by Commissioner Dennis. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the motion passes. Thank you. Our next order of business is a contract award for NREM foreclosures on delinquent property taxes. I believe, uh, we have a Commissioner who requests to be excused. No? Oh, I'm sorry.
I request to be excused from this vote.
Thank you Commissioner Eifert. Okay, our presenter is Clinton Swerington, our Tax Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chairlady and members of the Board. Uh, I'm here tonight, uh, exactly what you said, I'm requesting a contract award, uh, for NREM tax foreclosures to Morton and Griffin Attorneys at Law. North Carolina General Statute 105-375 provides clarification and authority to impose NREM foreclosures to collect delinquent property taxes. The contract is not to exceed $9,500. Uh, copy of the contract's included in your packet. The expected benefit to Stanley County is an increase in collections by more efficiently processing delinquent accounts. All other methods of enforced collection have been exhausted: garnishment, bank attachments, discheat, debt set-off, et cetera, and tax foreclosures are the only remaining option to collect these property taxes. There are a few circumstances where costs could be incurred by the County, but the Tax Administration staff will work diligently to minimize the risk to Stanley County. No NREM tax foreclosures have been performed since 2005, 2006, and I feel that it's an important step to take in order to increase the County's collection rate in the future. And I'm sure there's questions, and I'll be happy to answer any that you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of questions. Clint, right now, how many property owners do we have that if we, uh, approve this contract, that we could take this action to try to collect the taxes?
I don't have an exact number for property owners. Uh, I know that each year, when the fiscal year, when the, excuse me, when the delinquent period ends, for 2014 taxes, you have till January the 5th of 2015 to pay at par. January the 6th, they become delinquent. Each year, at the 1st of February, we have about anywhere from 2.3 to $3 million of outstanding, uh, debt for that year. If you go all the way back to the 10-year statute of limitations, we've got several million dollars of, of debt that hasn't been paid.
So, what you're saying, we have some property owners right now that owe for multiple years of back taxes?
That's a correct statement, and it varies from 10 years to one year, to two years, to five years.
And you're saying those dollars would be in the millions?
If we could get them all, obviously, we can't do them all at one time, but, you know, if we could progressively make that, that step towards it. Uh, I've been in the tax office since 2002. I was appointed Administrator in October of 13, and I knew that the last time we had done any type of foreclosure was 2005, '06. Uh, and it, it did drum up, but if you don't stay steady with it, people learn quick, and if you've done everything else you can to, to get the money, this is the final step, in my opinion, that you would take to get it.
Thank you.
Well, some of them non-collectible anyway. You, you wouldn't wanna spend money on those anyway.
No, obviously not.
I mean, a lot of that bill is already non-collectible, been on there forever, so, non-collectible.
Yeah, part of, part of the total is old motor vehicle bills and, and things like that, but this is strictly on real estate, is what this foreclosure is.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner?
Um, just out of curiosity, do you start back to 2004 and find those first, or do you move up?
I'll tell you what my initial plan is, is to start with vacant land. Uh, it's my concern, uh, I hope it would be your concern too. I don't wanna kick anybody out of their house without giving everybody forewarning what's going on, but with vacant land, you don't have to worry about that. It's just there. Uh, I wanna start with the oldest bills that go all the way back to 10 years, because every year that we don't get that, we lose a year. Uh, so, I say we lose it. It stays there, but I can enforce, collect it past 10 years. That's the statute of limitations. If somebody comes in, we still have the records, if they say, "I owe 15 years of taxes, I wanna pay it," sure, we'll take it, but I can't enforce anything past 10 years.
Any further questions from any of the Board? What's, what's the pleasure of the Board, Commissioner Dennis?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second by Commissioner Lohan. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
The new item is Albemarle to North Carolina Highway 200 Water Transmission Main Project Resolution, and our presenter is Ms. Donna Davis.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I do thank you for the opportunity this evening to present this, uh, resolution to you, and to give you a little bit of information regarding, uh, what we're asking. This is for a project, uh, that would essentially connect, uh, water on a secondary route from Albemarle to Highway 200. A portion of that has already been done, uh, through projects with the Water and Sewer Authority, and this is actually a project that dates back to funding, uh, that has been, uh, appropriate or approved by the federal government, but has not been appropriated to the County for actual use. What we're asking is, this is, um, a project that is done under the auspices of the Corps of Engineers, and, uh, the project has to pass through, uh, their, uh, Administration, and we're requesting, um, the opportunity to go back to the Corps and request additional money. This project has been on hold for about five years now, so there's some concerns that the actual cost of the project has escalated, and we need to give ourselves more room, uh, for the, uh, to cover the cost of this project. Originally, it was about $6 million, and the County is required to provide a 25%, uh, percent non-federal match. The, uh, since it's been about five years, the Corps has recommended that we, uh, increase that range, and that the project could potentially reach about $9 million. And while we're not certain that that is the case, everything will be done through bidding for the contracts, and we will, of course, do our best to keep the cost of the project, uh, at a minimum, um, we do wanna give ourselves enough room to, to, to be able to, um, build a project if necessary, and we don't, this is probably a one-time opportunity to go back to the federal government and ask for an increase in this appropriation. So, what we're asking in this resolution is that the Board of Commissioners authorize us to increase this limit, and this is an overall project scope. There were actually three projects, uh, constructed from this funding. Um, the first one in 2002, another one in 2006, and this is the third project. So, what you're gonna see is a request to increase, um, the budget from 8.9 million dollars to 11.5 million dollars. This is not specifically that individual project. This is the overall scope of the three projects, but we have to ask for it in that manner. And now that I've thoroughly confused you, please ask me some questions so that we could make sure this is clear.
I thought you explained it very well, Ms. Davis, but are there any questions?
Ms. Davis, how many additional customers would that be on that? You have any idea?
I, I'm not sure at this point, uh, and I don't remember for this particular project. I will tell you that we're looking at about 12 miles of actual water line installed. Uh, one of the, the things it will do, it, is it will give us a secondary feed or a secondary transmission main to provide water to the western part of the, uh, the county. Right now, if there were anything to happen on our, uh, water main on Highway 2427, and we lost that for an extended period of time, then the western part of the county has access to no water. And so, what this line will do is give us a secondary feed to, uh, provide additional water to the western part of the county, but in terms of an emergency, to provide some sort of water to the western part of the county if there is an emergency. And I would, um, draw your attention to the maps that were provided. This was done as a part of the original, uh, project scope prior to the engineering. What you will not see on the map, particularly Figure 2, where it says the proposed pipeline and project features, there's actually a portion of this project that's on Boss Road. It's not indicated here, but the engineering required that we also put some, uh, water line on Boss Road as well.
Does that, uh, stretch the entire distance of Boss Road, all the way back to 2427?
Yes.
Any other questions at the Board, to Ms. Davis?
Ms. Davis, wonder will be able to use the, uh, line on St. Martin Road as a transmission line to hook up to, uh, as a transmission line to western Stanley, that big line we got down St. Martin Road to over?
That would be a possibility, but of course, we'd have to construct something on the southern part of the county, uh, heading out toward, um, the western part of the county. So, that is, that is a potential. Um, that is something I think that the Water and Sewer Authority, uh, may be considering as a part of their future projects. Uh, of course, the County can always consider that. Um, I will tell you, uh, it probably wouldn't hurt to, to have that third access, uh, to provide additional water. I will tell you, this one is already, has already been designed, so we wouldn't wanna just shift and pull away from, the money away from this project and shift it somewhere else, because we've invested, the County's already invested a considerable amount in this project.
Well, while you're looking at that big line to hook it up, we need to look, go into the left and go to Aquadale and pick up another supply of water, which would be from the town of Norwood. We don't have far to go down there, but we have us another hookup for water.
What's the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chair, I move we approve.
Have a motion from Commissioner Dennis, a second from Commissioner Burleson to adopt the resolution. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
Moving along, Mr. Andy Lucas, the County Manager, is our presenter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually gonna go down to the podium to bring the video up.
Right.
It's an update from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Here, have a piece of candy. You want a piece?
Hi, my name's Kevin Leonard, and I'm honored to be your Executive Director of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. On behalf of all of our staff here at the Association, I would like to extend to you a special hello to your Board, and a congratulations to our newly-elected Commissioners. Now, being a County Commissioner, we know can be challenging and sometimes a thankless job, but please know that we appreciate all of you who are willing to step up and be a leader in your county and in your state. It's an exciting time here at our association. It's a time of change and transition and new ideas, and my hope is to hear from you about your new ideas that will make our association even stronger as we move forward. In this brief video, you will hear about some upcoming opportunities for you to learn more about county government and our association. We're actually in the process of developing our legislative agenda for the upcoming biennium, and it's not too late for you to get involved. I encourage you to attend our Legislative Goals Conference, which will be held in Moore County this January, to learn about the legislative issues and to get involved in our grassroots advocacy efforts. You know, we're very fortunate that our association in North Carolina is one of the strongest county government associations in the entire nation. And our secret? Our secret is you. Through your active participation, together we are 100 counties strong, and together we can do great things. As always, please call us if we can be of any assistance, and I look forward to seeing you soon.
The Association has completed the first three stages of its five-step Legislative Goals
goals process. The last stage, your Legislative Goals Conference, is January fifteenth and sixteenth in Moore County. We have forty-five goals still under consideration regarding issues as diverse and critical as mental health, nine-one-one funding, broadband services, Medicaid, school construction funding, and economic development, among many others. At the conference, county commissioners such as yourself will debate and vote upon those goals remaining after board approval in December. All one hundred counties have the opportunity to send one voting delegate to be part of the final decision on NCACC's twenty fifteen, sixteen legislative agenda. Make sure your county is part of the process by registering on our website. We need input from all regions of the state to give us the strongest position possible to advocate for your agenda at the General Assembly.
One of the association's primary responsibilities is to help you understand your roles and responsibilities as county commissioners. There are numerous educational opportunities coming up in the next few months. The first is for new board chairs and vice chairs on January the fourteenth in Moore County. This day-long session will teach presiding officers the rules of procedure and how to manage a meeting. At the end of the day, all board members are invited to a discussion of general parliamentary procedure. In addition to this training, every two years following county government elections, we partner with the School of Government at the University of North Carolina to sponsor the Essentials of County Government schools. The comprehensive two-day course serves as an orientation to county government law and practice for new and veteran county commissioners. It is the foundation course for earning credits in the local elected leaders academy. The Essentials schools will be offered in four locations throughout the state in January and February. The curriculum includes basic county government law, local taxation and the financing of county government services, handling conflicts of interest, public school financing, and building relationships with other boards and interests. Also included is the two-hour mandatory ethics training required by state law for every new or returning commissioner within one year of election or reelection. Veteran commissioners not enrolled in the Essentials classes, as well as municipal elected officials, can attend this advanced seminar for a modest fee. To learn more about these programs, please visit our website at the address on your screen.
I want to make everyone aware of a new service we rolled out in November this year. It's a human resources legal helpline, and it is designed to assist risk pool members with basic time-sensitive employment issues, such as employee terminations, addressing harassment or discrimination allegations, or even requests for reasonable accommodations. Basically, issues that if handled improperly could lead to litigation and avoidable HR problems. We've contracted directly with risk pool attorneys that have strong employment law experience in order to provide sound HR legal advice at no initial cost to our membership. If you are a member of the risk management pools, and you do have to be a member to have access, you should have received information from me in November about how to gain access and utilize this service. This is yet another example of our efforts to continually improve our risk management product and services, adding value to an already superior government-based risk coverage and finance program. And in fact, the NCACC risk management pools are the number one provider of property liability and workers' compensation coverage for the entire state, with sixty-eight of the one hundred counties participating as risk pool members.
There is a note requesting approval of this video. Oh, okay. Never mind, disregard that. Next on the agenda is the mandatory code of ethics. Per North Carolina General Statute one six oh A dash eighty-six, the county must reaffirm the code of ethics by December thirty-first of each year. You have in your agenda packets the code of ethics for your review and approval. So it has been provided to you in advance, and I'll call for, um, a motion to approve for compliance with-
I make a motion we approve the-
I'm sorry. Commissioner Oshito has made the motion. Commissioner Dennis had seconded it, and I apologize, I did not hear you. All those in favor of approving the code of ethics say aye. Opposed, no. No, I wasn't saying no. I was asking for, if you oppose it, say no. The motion passes. The last order of business tonight is our consent agenda. You have it before you. The chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve the consent agenda, a second by Commissioner Oshito. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion carries. And I believe we have closed sess- where is it? Okay, it's time for a public comment. If anyone would like to come forward and say anything, please feel free to do so. Keep your comments to about three minutes. Seeing none, hearing none, the public comment session, uh, section is closed. I'll begin on my right, our county attorney, Ms. Fur, if you have any comments.
No comment, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Oshito.
Just want to real quick welcome all the new folks aboard and looking forward to working over the next two years with everybody. And then, um, just real quick, I'm going to start my workdays again. My health is enough to where I could do most stuff except for lifting. So December, I'll be in the planning, well, this, about, probably next week, I'll be in the planning department going on inspections. Then in January, I'm going to do two days, I'm going to do a facility tour of the school board, and I'm going to do the, um, work in the tax department. February, I'll be in the health department. March is opening, I'll be working at the senior center in April. And then I just, um, just want to challenge all my fellow commissioners that, that use this comment section to make comments, because I really enjoy hearing what other guys, I know it sounds weird, but I enjoy it when I hear about reports from other committees and stuff like that, that you, that the other commissioners go to. So I challenge that. And just I'll make one more comment about the security tonight. We had, we had a representative from Raleigh here, we had seven county commissioners, we had department heads, attorney, we had family members here, and we did not have an armed, I mean, a, a uniformed officer till just now. And we had the four folks from the sheriff's department all sitting up front, looking at us the entire night. And I just don't think that was acceptable at all. So hopefully they can take care of that for the, for the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Oshito. Commissioner Lohan?
I would like to, uh, express my thanks to the voters that voted for me and put me in this particular county commissioner seat. Uh, now, I look forward to working for all of the citizens of Stanley County, and I look forward to working with the previous commissioners and the new commissioners and the administrative staff. And I think if we all work together, we can make a difference in Stanley County, and we can improve the lives of every citizen in Stanley County. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. Commissioner Dennis?
I just want to welcome all the new members on board. Look forward to working with you. And I don't consider Jan a new member. I mean, I've served with her before.
Don't you call me old.
McIntyre, I believe I've served with him a time or two. Peter, I look forward to serving two more years with you. Thank y'all very much.
Commissioner Eifert?
First of all, I'd like to thank my lovely wife for being here tonight. Uh, she has been my biggest supporter over the years, and, uh, I love her and thank for being here. Representative Burr, I hope your throat is okay from all that talking you did. I certainly appreciate, uh, you doing that. You swore me in one time as mayor of Locust, and I certainly appreciate that. And it was an honor to be here tonight, and, and you do that for me here as county commissioner. And again, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Uh, it's, it's going to be a challenge, I think, uh, but I think we can put our heads together and make good for Stanley County.
Commissioner McIntyre, thank you, Commissioner Eifert.
Just like to welcome all the new board members and welcome back the older, us older members, and I am old. But, uh, looking forward to a good year here. Thank you. And thank you, Justin, for being here and taking care of us.
Commissioner Burleson?
I would just like to give a special thanks to our representative, Justin Burr, for being here tonight. Um, and, uh, look forward to working, uh, with everyone, uh, county staff and, uh, county commissioners. I think it's, uh, going to be a great year. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Burleson. County Manager, Mr. Lucas.
No comment. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that we, we had the room full tonight, and it was enjoyable to see your families and your friends and to see, um, those holding the Bible for, for those of you taking office. It was a very special night for me to return with Commissioner McIntyre and Commissioner Dennis. We are old friends, but I have a lot of new friends, and I'm looking forward to working with them. And I sincerely thank this male Board of Commissioners for choosing me to be their chairman. Thank you, and have a good evening. At this time, we need to go into closed session to discuss a bis- personnel issue in accordance with General Statute one four three dash three one eight point one one A six.
Make a motion for going to recess and then into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion to recess and a second by Commissioner Dennis. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. We're in closed recess. You can leave your stuff-